It's 5:30. I call to order the work session of the Board of Mayor and Selectmen and Selectwomen for the City of McComb City, Mississippi, December the 2nd, 2005, 5:30 PM. I want to welcome each and everyone who is present here today, as well as to welcome those who may be watching us by social media. I hope that each and every one of you had a happy, safe Thanksgiving. Do want to welcome our new City Administrator, Mr. Bell, here. This is his first meeting. This is his second day on the job.
Thank you, sir.
We have the agenda, and we're going to go by the agenda. The first person is McComb Firefighter Performance, Mr. Damon Spears.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Board. I felt it quite reasonable to hopefully have the city recognize some of the finest in town. Last weekend, or this past weekend, the weekend before, I lived on a farm and had a new calf born on Saturday afternoon. Sunday came around and couldn't find the calf. And just after we got out of the woods looking for it, the bull in field actually alerted it to, alerted us to something in the field. We thought the worst, went over there, and there was a hole that had appeared in my field. And looking down in it, I couldn't see the bottom, and I heard a grummet. And I said evidently not, there's no way this happened. This calf is not 24 hours old yet. The calf fell into the hole to the depth of 25 feet.
Oh, my.
We got, looked down in the hole, the calf's looking up at us. I didn't know what to do, so I called 911 dispatch, going to try to get the volunteer fire department to see if there's anything they could do. I figured with all the rescue stuff that they did and everything, they could help out. She said, "I'll call you back." But I never heard from her. About 20 minutes later, I hear sirens coming down 48. My driveway looked like a massive car wreck. Sunny Hill Fire Department volunteers, Fernwood volunteers, and Engine 17 of McComb showed up. The firefighters that were involved in this, I'd like to recognize to the board, is Curtis Miller, Sean Green, and Matthew Alexander.
Would you all please stand up, those names, he called?
These three guys worked almost three hours on their bellies getting this calf out of this hole because they had to get the ropes around the front feeding, around the head. So, we didn't know how deep the hole was. And we didn't want to move the calf in case it fell down further. And they finally got everything around it and jerked the calf out. And I want you to know the calf got with his mama that night, and is still running around the field today.
All right.
Okay.
So, these guys went over and above the call of duty to come out there. I know firefighters sometimes, you know, people look at them and say, "Well, they don't do much, they ain't fighting fires." Well, I tell you right now, they, they went over and above what they needed to do. And if they do that for a calf, I can't imagine what they'd do for the city.
Those are all firefighters which we, as a board, are very proud of.
You mean? Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing.
Oh, I got two years. I love animals.
That's right, you grew up in the country. Okay, second legal concerns, our City Attorney.
So, first is, I'm gonna take-
Safe Water America.
I'm gonna take 2B first.
Okay.
So, Selectman McKenzie asked that I review, and the mayor sent me and asked that I review the Water Company of America contract. I did review the Water Company of America contract because I think the question had been asked, can we start doing the findings ourselves? So, the Water Company of America contract has two phases in it. Phase one is the finding phase, and it, the city gave a proceed, a notice to proceed on or about August of 2024. So, they finished phase one, which was the find. So, nobody's finding anything anymore on behalf of the Water Company of America for the City of McComb. The Water Company of America has yet to send the City of McComb under phase two any bill because phase two is once the finding was made, then it is incumbent upon the city to approve and then to execute through another contractor the installation or repair of that meter. So, there was a different contractor that was doing the installation of the meter. Then it is back on the city again to do the programming. Once a meter has been programmed, then there is an audit period where we look at what the city was billing as far as water and what the city is now billing, at which point the Water Company of America pursuant to the contract is entitled to 50% of the increase for 48 cycles. So, each meter, none of the meters are starting at the same time. Do you want me to go into my concerns or not?
That's not up to you.
Okay, so I will say I'm concerned, and, and no shade on anybody. I'm not an engineer, I'm not any, anything. But the city is going to start receiving, at some point, invoices pursuant to, to that contract once billing and whatnot is done. The city is subject to get a lot of money from these increases because, for instance, if you have, the hospital was being billed somewhere around $300 by the City of McComb, but they should be being billed like $2,500? That's a significant difference. You have places like an apartment complex. Well, if you know if you're only billing $300 in an apartment complex with multiple units, you should see an increase if everything is programmed. I, I, I don't know, and maybe Mr. Spurlock can speak to you all if you all have questions as to why some of the meters that were approved, that were identified, have not been approved or were delayed in approval. But that's when the, pursuant to the contract, that's when the, the billing will start from Water Company for America. But as of today, Water Company of America has not billed the city anything, and they are finished with phase one, so they're not finding anything anymore. Any questions? But no, you can't get out the contract as, as it's written.
Any questions from Board members?
So, you said we cannot get out of the contract. It's like it doesn't have an end period?
It does have an end period. The 48 cycles, once the, once the last, like I said, the, none of the meters are gonna-
All of them are not.
Are not turning on, on the same time. And so, everything is not gonna end at the same time. It's 48 cycles from the time of an audit increase.
Okay, that's from the first time.
From the first.
Say, for instance, they come in six months later and discover something, then that's-
They're not discovering anything, they're not discovering anything anymore.
Well, I'm gonna say, what if, if there is a new discovery? So, they would not, so if they don't have any new discoveries, then they won't be looking for anything, right?
No, and they're, they're no longer looking for anything, period. That was phase one. Phase one ended in August of 2024.
Selectwoman Isaac, then Selectman Thompson.
But I could've sworn that man told us standing up here that we can end the contract with the company. I could've sworn he said that. It should be on one of the videotape, that he did say that.
The contract will end at some point, 48 cycles from the last adjustment.
Okay, so you said we have 48 cycles, because he did say we can end the contract.
Well, phase one has already ended. There is no termination language in the contract for phase two. Phase two ends at the end of 48 cycles, after the last meter has been-
Played out.
Programmed, yes.
Selectman Thompson is on next.
That was basically my question. So, phase two is basically the, the cycling of the meters to be paid from, basically what you said.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
So, the last numbers I have, which came from this meeting, was Water Company of America found $21,336 a month of water billing shortfalls, where we are underbilling customers. Over 48 months, that is $1,024,128. So, so over the next 48 months, if we receive the projected amount of $21,300 a month, Water Company would get half a million, and we would see an increase of half a million as well in, in water revenues over 48 cycles for years, which comes out to a little over $100,000. You know, two concerns. My, my, my first concern is I don't know of any change in process that the city has taken to prevent us from falling back into this million dollars over four years of underbilling our customers. And it's not necessarily underbilling our customers. I don't, I don't want that to say, sound wrong. Water, most of it is, is for our expenses, is almost a flat rate. You know, we don't pay more for sewage if, if more water goes through the wastewater system. Not, not too much. It, it is very stable rates. Water, it's almost the same way. Most of it is, is fixed and not variable. So, what I see is the citizens of McComb were, the people who were paying the proper amount were paying for people who were not paying the proper amount to the tune of $1 million over four years. And one, that's not fair to the customers who pay their water bill every single month on time. And two, it's bad on us that we still don't have a process that we can see, or that I have seen, of how we're gonna prevent this from happening again. Lastly, I'm concerned that we have not gotten a bill from Water Company of America yet because, in my mind, Water Company of America wants to get paid for their findings. And two, if we don't have a bill, that means we haven't corrected any accounts yet. Or at least, they don't know we've corrected any accounts yet. So, I'm stuck in this cycle that, you know, we did this thing two and a half years ago to figure out what's going on with our water billing. And, and we're seeing a big increase, and Water Company of America's getting a lot of money out of this. But if they haven't sent us a bill, it's because what have we done to fix the problem? So, we haven't fixed the process to identify these on our own yet, and I don't know if we've corrected any bills. You know, I'd love to see a copy of some of the bills that the attorney has brought up to see if those have increased and if they've increased to the projection that Water Company of America has. So, my argument is the process is still broken, and that's concerning.
Selectman McKenzie.
Do we know if the training occurred that we wanted to happen?
On the programming?
On the programming, on the meter reading?
Well, it's three phases, it was?
We, we voted to train the people downstairs on the software and voted on training the people in the field on the meter reader world.
Okay, on the people downstairs, their training was scheduled for November. However, the software is, will be having an upgrade in January, and he suggested that they would hold back on that training until the software is upgraded, and then they'd be trained on that software after it's been upgraded. Because if they would have been trained in November, they did the upgrade in January, they would have to come back and train them again as it relates to the upgrades. So, that's the answer for the latest downstairs, or the utility building office downstairs. I can't give an answer for the meter readers. Mrs. Spurlock, do you know if the training for the meter readers happened?
No, it didn't, for the same reason.
For the same reason? Oh, okay.
We voted on it like 89 months ago, maybe? So, okay, and I guess we need to ask the question on these things, have they been fixed yet, these meters?
Okay, Mrs. Spurlock, as it relates to the meters that was identified by Water of America, the board would like to know whether or not they have been fixed?
All of them were set for, and that's on the contract that we hired. He will be back on the 13th to finish.
Two of those fours were repaired, but also they were broken, so they've got to come back and fix two of those, which makes four.
I really think we need to seriously look at outsourcing meter reading because you're looking at a huge amount of money that the city has lost, and I don't see a process like Selectman Conde says of getting this fixed. And the other thing I would like to say is that we have three public entities that have gotten nearly $400,000 in free services, and I want to see them build for it. I, I, they need to be billed for, you know, I mean, I think it's against the law for somebody to receive free services in the state of Mississippi. So, you know, it's a disservice to all these people that come down here and have to pay, what is the fee for rehooking up your service?
$50.
And they do it to line down there every month, and these people are then getting $400,000 of free water and sewer for the last three or four years. You know, I think legally, we can bill for it. You can go down and look at historical, which we're at least part of. So, I think the board really needs to look at that. Maybe the citizens need to weigh in on whether or not we should give free water away.
Well, let's have our attorney to look out, look at the legal rim for us to do that.
To do what?
To, to bill people for, back bill, back bill people for water.
Here, there's an attorney general opinion that I requested on that, and that's their answer. So, you can take that.
We have, well, talk to Mr. Meyer.
I, I would say attorney general says that, and our City Attorney agrees with it and all that, let us move forward. That's what I said.
And there's a state statue on it.
Let me miss that much.
I mean, it's been going on for two years, we talking about it, and it's still not fixed. It, it's time to either outsource it, you know, or, I don't know. It's about two years ago to date that we got Water Company of America in here. We still don't have water meter sticks that they identified, 13 of them.
I say so.
That's only-
That's on the contract that we have, not on public works. Every, every resity that we have to put down is in the ground.
Okay, see, we need to run those reports, too.
Selectman Thompson.
So, do our contractors have a starting date and an ending date?
I don't think y'all gave them a starting date. They were, they gave them a starting date, but I don't think they gave them an ending date.
It's been going on for years.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Select.
So, we hire a new contractor, and let's get the meters fixed. Because this is the same story we heard six months ago. It's the exact same story we heard six months ago. So, it's time to hire Greenbrier, who's done everything else, to change out these meters, or find somebody. It's not a simple, it's not a hard task to change out a meter.
Selectwoman Isaac.
Mayor, okay, I was with Mr. Spurlock when he made the call to the man, and the man did tell him he would follow back up with him. I was on Sunday street when he made the phone call. So, Mrs. Spurlock is not standing, standing here telling him to tell him he made the phone call to the man, and that's what the man replied back.
I'm not denying that. I'm just saying he's not performing. It's time to replace him.
Mrs. Spurlock, I would suggest that you look for someone else to replace the, the last four meters, yeah.
Does he go on the agenda, pass a vote on it? You need to vote on it?
He needs to bring us a, some type of, some type of invoice or quote for it.
Yeah, but-
Why is it not being billed?
They all being billed.
No, he says the customer getting serviced for not being billed. Why are they not being billed?
I would, according to them, they're billing everything. That's what they told me yesterday, everybody's getting the bill. Except for those four.
Next.
Okay, Safe Solicitation Act. I prepared a brief memorandum, memorandum for you if you decide you want to read it. Let me give you the skinny of it.
You will find it on your, on your desk in front of your head.
Skinny is, as, as far as the action for this board, the Mississippi legislature passed House Bill 1197 in July, basically giving Capitol City Police some authority in the City of Jackson. But because panhandling and solicitation at corners has become an issue across the state, they passed a bill that basically lays out the authority for cities to put in place a permit where people have to get a permit per day. Cities can opt out of this particular law if they choose to, like the City of Columbus chose to opt out of the Safe Solicitation Act because of, they have, it's a farming community, and they, and they have farming vendors that sell things, and having to get a permit every day for you to go out and sell something is what's gonna create a tax, a, a burden on their, their folk. So, the action before the board today is whether or not you want to opt out. I did lean forward because there is no affirmative action you have to take if you want to be subject to the Safe Solicitation Act. There is an affirmative action you have to take if you want to opt out. So, if you choose to opt out, I went ahead and created a resolution for you as well. I did not create a resolution if you want to stay in because I, you don't need to do that, you don't need to take an action.
Selectman Conde.
Let me say this before you finish.
You're back.
The City of McComb actually already has at least two ordinances that deal with, your ordinance refers to peddling and to disturbance in the street, you know, serving sidewalks. So, the City of McComb already has two ordinances. In fact, the ordinance from MUNICO for the City of McComb actually gives you all a higher penalty, a higher fine than the Safe Solicitation, Safe Solicitation says if you can find somebody up to $25, or the permit is up to $25, McComb's is, is higher than that, so.
Selectman Conde.
You know, panhandling is something that, that I get routine calls about, especially in our downtown district. That's something that, that turns away the public. I've gotten calls about it at Walmart, at the mall. I, I would, I would ask this board, you know, in our efforts to create a more welcoming downtown, that we would take the teeth that the state has given us and something that's backed by the state in addressing this issue. I know it's a very sensitive subject. I know there's a reason why people panhandle. But it is, it is better for most that it does not happen in our city than it does if it happens in our city.
City Attorney.
I will point out that while the, the law is backed by the state, is unfunded mandate. So, the, the state may be backing you by creating an, a law for you to follow when you already have an ordinance, but they're not giving you any money to follow that particular law. There is also the issue of putting in place, and this would fall to you, Mr. City Administrator, establishing a permit application and issuance procedures in partnership with the Chief of Police because ultimately, the chief is, and the police department are the ones who end up enforcing. I, I will point out, as I put in the memo, there, and not that anybody's afraid of ACLU. I used to be the Executive Director of ACLU, you should have been afraid then. They, oh, they, they have brought litigation. And I think they'll, they'll bring more litigation pursuant to this, in my opinion.
Selectman Thompson.
So, how would this affect people like food trucks?
If they obstruct in the sidewalks, then they gonna have to have a daily permit. And you can charge them up to $25 per day to get a permit.
But that's sidewalks, not parking lots or-
Obstructing traffic.
What he's referring to is what would happen, would this impact those who would be out in Walmart parking lot selling?
My personal life is Walmart parking.
Okay.
I have a question about it.
Selectwoman Baylor.
What if someone homeless is panhandling?
That's what this is for.
That's exactly where we start from. So, who's gonna pay their part and pay for them to get out of jail? How do we do that? You don't.
I don't think the maximum fine includes jail time.
Also, you have to remember that the jail space is even, is limited because this, and, and correct me, Chief, this would be a misdemeanor?
Yes.
And it wouldn't be a violent misdemeanor, so we don't have bed space for them?
What you do now, we got a memo today, there are obvious spaces for misdemeanor.
Okay.
You're missing it too.
Okay. Thank you for updating me, because I knew at one time we did not.
No, it just came out today.
Okay.
But that's $300 you'll never, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's $300 you're never gonna see. To answer your question, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see $300 for my person that's experienced homelessness.
No, no. Chief.
Yes, and I think I spoke with Attorney briefly on this earlier this year, I think you remember. One thing I think it would help with, especially area like Five Point, where people be taking up money, like those sports team football, you see them out there taking up money, obstructing traffic. But there are a lot of people there taking up money in the name of false entities. So, this, yeah, this would help if they have to come get a permit. We would know who, who's actually out there taking up this money. We have people just coming through saying they raising money for a church that don't even exist. So, it would help on, on things like that.
But I will say you already have a peddling ordinance. You do.
Peddling.
Peddling, peddling, another word for panhandling.
That's selling, though, is peddling is selling something, not asking for anything, so.
I haven't read-
Obstructing traffic is, is different. We can do that, that's an odd block, obstructing traffic.
Yeah, you have too, right.
But, um, peddling, I think that's, that's a sale, they trying to sell stuff on our state. I'm not sure, but yeah.
So, Chief, if I'm listening and are hearing you at the same time, you would recommend that we, we stay in and not opt out?
I would, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm- Just wanted to make sure I'm hearing.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Any other?
Yeah, kind of sort of, so if we put the homeless in jail, that's gonna increase our.
Numbers.
Numbers and our G F B's again.
Yes, 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 yes. Select.
I think, I think we're taking a, uh, a pretty, a pretty big jump here, you know? So, the only thing that outlines jail on here is the forgery of a permit. Someone tries to fake a permit and turns it into the police department. I don't see that an issue, so, please, Chief, if, if it's the will, faking a permit, I, I've never.
A I would do it.
I don't think, but what this targets has the capability of, A, making an A I permit and printing it out and, and maintaining it. So, let, let's just go through an exercise, Chief. If, if I'm panhandling and you catch me at the Five Point panhandling, what are you gonna tell me?
Show me your permit.
And I say, I don't have a permit, then what are you gonna say?
You get fined for, I guess, the twenty-five dollars.
You probably say, get lost or get fined.
No, 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 that's not what it says.
The twenty-five dollars is the permit fee.
For the permit, the penalty is either six months or a fif- five hundred dollar fine or both. That's the penalty as I read, it's a misdemeanor penalty for soliciting without a permit, six months confinement, five hundred dollar fine.
It, it's just like speeding though, okay? Many times, you're just gonna be told, stop doing it.
Hmm.
A, a, and, and move on, you know?
You need some good, you must tell somebody.
Must, must, must be.
Actually, the law don't allow the punishment anyway, so Jim's gonna break the law regardless, so, just going to keep it this out.
I'd say listen to your police chief, maybe, maybe that would help the court out.
Okay.
If you stay in, if you stay in, City Administrator, you have to have your, um, processes in place by January first.
Take it notes.
And if you don't have your process, it's in by January first. City Attorney. So, what are we gonna do with this? Tell me.
So. When we win, when if we decide six months from now, or maybe even the next administration decides to opt out, is that still possible?
Not according to the statute, section six is one little line that says, opt in within six months of inaction, within action do not occur.
But there's no opt out if you decide right down the road.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't say so or statute, now that doesn't mean that the legislature may not come back and clean it up.
But right now, January first is deadline. Yeah, uh, Select McCallum, then Select Woman Baylor.
So, we have the same thing with marijuana, right when we started. This is a common thing with state legislature, is that if they're gonna make a municipal law, kind of sort of, then they give the municipality the option to opt out within six months of it passing. And I think we opted, we did not opt out of marijuana, um, so it's very similar to that.
Okay.
So, if we stop them going at the Five Point and other places, and they leave there and they go in front of the Dollar General store, asking and doing stuff, or in, in front of the businesses, how we stop that?
If they're panhandling, same thing, same process, same thing.
Okay, we don't have enough beds to block the thought of misdemeanor out there.
Get some bunk beds.
Okay, so I like we digress. Okay. Should I put it on the agenda, we voted up or down?
Yes.
Okay, on the agenda. Okay, Chief or Deputy Chief, we got a request for, uh, clothing allowance. Please, come on up, don't wait, don't waste my time.
I, I don't know how they'll get on the mayor, I, I put in some for vehicles and, uh, and cameras, so I don't know how these get on, this normally don't come through the board.
Yes, it does, cuz we have to spread it across our minutes.
For, for clothing allowance?
Yes, sir.
This is the first time, um, for me, we've been, knowing that there ain't y'all.
No, no, it, it still has to be spread, voted on and spread it across our minutes.
Okay.
Before it can be paid.
Okay, you pushing, the, the clothing allowance by detective, uh, they are in plain clothes, so that's why they, uh.
And they get this twice a year, so this will be the first one for twenty-six, or this is the last one for twenty-five. First one for twenty-six.
I have a question.
Uh, if it's gonna be the fir-, okay, first one for twenty-six, yes ma'am, Select.
Actually, there is a question, cuz you brought it up, uh, you said you put on your, for cameras about cameras.
I, I, I request to be on the news for cameras and.
But that didn't get to us.
Well, since it didn't get to us, can you, can he tell us what he was requesting about the cameras? Cuz I asked him to concern us about the cameras. Okay, so what's your concern?
Uh, the NOLA cameras, uh, I'm.
Trash.
I'm not happy with them. We hadn't, uh, hadn't solved one crime, uh, according to the NOLA. Ring cameras from, from individual had did a lot better. There was another camera system that I liked really, really well. So, I just think we need to take a look at the system that we have in registered NOLA now.
What we need.
Okay.
Okay, take a look at it.
Cuz we've had problems with NOLA, and they were supposed to have been doing something with the storage. They were supposed to come here and do a demonstration and talk to us, and it's time to let them go.
I think so, uh, they claim it's the service.
Well, we claiming they gotta go.
A T and T and, uh, I think it's A T and T is ceasefire, it's not the service. Uh, they say the internet service, but.
It's storage, huh?
Got a special internet service that don't go out, and it, and it's, so that's not the issue, so.
So, is it actually being monitored in New Orleans?
Uh, it can be.
So, it's not?
Monitor, no, not.
So, that was just something they just told us.
It can be monitored, they can go back and look at it, uh, but I don't think nobody like sitting there watching it for twenty-four hours.
So, we need something that somebody's gonna watch, um, solve some crimes.
Or something that's gonna catch.
So, you are, do you have the information for the new cameras that we can solve some crimes with?
I do, and, uh, and the representatives coming, planning on coming, uh, if, if it pleases the board to do a demonstration on how it work, and it's a game changer, it got, it connected to nine-one-one where when somebody called nine-one-one, there was a camera in that area, it'll automatically pull up that location to the dispatcher. So, the dispatcher would actually be able to see the house that's called in real time. So, it's, it's definitely a game changer, it's really good, so, like the board to see the demonstration. Wilson Technologies is the name of it.
Okay, now with our shot splatters, are they working okay?
They're working, they're working good.
All of them?
All of them.
So, I'd like to find me some rounds on that, yeah.
No, you don't do that.
But you were supposed to get us to report on the shot spotters, right?
Yes, that's, um, next, next work session when I present.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, and the vehicles that we did do is, I have a van, transportation van and some more stuff, so we can, we can talk with that.
Where'd you get, you got around to it?
Around, we did that.
Always want to start spreading in the van.
What?
I, I, I was, but it did get on the channel.
Mom said why you didn't get on there? You can bring it up, that's what Mr. Mom said, why? Transportation, that's what Mr. Mom said, why?
If it didn't get to Ms. Patty and, and Ms. Tamika, then it's not on the agenda, it didn't get to them. I mean, if he has all the documentation and everything with him, we can get copies made and all that, but we did not get the information between the two.
So, you didn't get any on that?
I got according to what her, her.
The tech, the, the request said it had to be in when it comes in.
On Monday?
Uh, no, it, it goes out on, on Wednesday, that you need to get your information in by Thursday to department heads and to the board.
Because of the holidays, it's on Monday at this time.
Well. It wasn't in.
But I'll make sure you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief. Okay, now, down to me. Uh, fireworks for, um, New Year's, I just need your permission to sign, uh, we've already paid for the fireworks, uh, to sign the, uh, plan here.
Do we, do we suspend the policy as well, sorry?
Selectman.
Do we suspend the policy?
We will be required to suspend our policy for fireworks. No, no, because the past administration allowed fireworks for, uh, New Year's.
So, it's in the policy.
It should be in the policy.
Those two days are accepted.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
We're talking about New Year's, is there any kind of way we can adopt some type of policy that, uh, we have no unaccom- no children accom- that's not accompanied by adult and no drop offs? You don't have a parent there to, uh, you know, what I'm trying to say?
Are you talking about at the event?
Yes, no, we don't need a lot of children running around and.
Unsupervised.
So, can we adopt some type of policy, no drop offs, um, a certain age, maybe, maybe not, but, um.
Again, that's, that's, that's out of my arena, I, I look at my city attorney, looking at the policy where for our New Year's event that you cannot have children under a certain age unsupervised.
At the New Year's Eve fireworks show.
And they're caught under the garage unsupervised, yeah, we're gonna need that van. Child, somewhere.
Erica, they still gonna be unsupervised.
Well, it's time to start making some examples, cuz people gonna get hurt from silly stuff.
Yes, they're liking it in their last year.
Yeah.
You know, um, having family safe, friendly event, uh, they are always knuckleheads who will take advantage and make it appear to be bad.
Not this year.
And, and again, uh, that was a wonderful fireworks, uh, we had a good New Year's Eve program and a few bad apples decided they wanted to shoot fireworks under the parking garage. Yeah, uh, and those bad apples were unsupervised. Then that's the best way I can say it. Okay, and that's why, uh, Select Woman Baylor is, um, making her request. But the event itself, uh, goals have gone on without any pickups. Uh, our citizens seem to enjoy the New Year's fireworks. Uh, so, let us try to encourage parents who bring their children to supervise their children. Let us also encourage parents not to drop off their kids as if this is an event and that we are the babysitters for their children. Yeah. But, um, I, I will need permission from this board to sign off on this. Put it on the agenda, okay? Next, you have twenty L. Uh, page is thirty-six, uh, you have a email come in from, uh, Mr. Cox to myself as it relates to, um, twenty L. Uh, there is a pay app for seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and seven cents. You see the paperwork there, uh, for your information, Mr. Green has done or completed his inspection. Uh, I have, uh, talked to Mr., what is his name? Barry White from, uh, Archives and History, uh, telling them the significance of getting, uh, the final walkthrough from them, uh, giving me a date, so I'm trying to get them to, uh, give me a date, uh, for that. Uh, Steve did contact, not Steve, Mr. Cox, did contact them in reference to the final walkthrough. Uh, I just felt that as the mayor, if I gave a call, it might kind of push it up quicker, uh, for them, uh, so I did.
Okay.
Okay, next, you have Harris Computers. Um, I was contacted by Harris Computers that we have not paid, uh, for the management part of their software since June. Um, and they asked me to correct this error. Uh, as you know, I don't have that authority, the board has that authority, so I'm bringing it to the board. Um, you will see that from June through December, uh, they have not been paid for the management part of the software. The court system and police department have been paid, but the management has not.
Uh, question.
Uh, Selectman Moles.
Had they submitted the bill?
Yes, they did submit the bill. Uh, it's my understanding that the bill has been sent to our city clerk and one of her deputy city clerks. But for some reason, it's not being paid. Selectman McKenzie.
Ask, can I go back one real quick, ask one simple question? Did you, did it just register with me on the depot?
Yes.
About Archives and History, would that meeting have anything to do holding up them, being able to occupy the building?
Well, the city attorney and I spoke about that today, and I'm gonna let her explain better than I could as to how that could happen, uh, we would have to have something.
It would be my recommendation that, um, acceptance of the building be contingent upon, uh, any findings from Archives and History.
I just said that I'm waiting, I, I made a call to Mr. Bear White, who's over that division, to see if I could kind of push up the walkthrough, Selectman McKenzie.
So, Mr. Green's given a certificate of occupancy?
I don't know if he gave the occupancy, I know he did the inspection, Mr. Green.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, he just registered me what you said.
Mr. Green, the question is, have you given, uh, uh, occupancy?
I have not, cuz Stuart has not requested it, uh, it's not necessarily, uh, my responsibility to call a contractor to ask him if he's ready for the C O. Typically, to close out a job, they always, uh, they actually are in a rush to get it as soon as they can. I'm not certain what the deal is with Stuart, but I've, uh, done my walkthrough with, had it valid, being, uh, as far as I'm concerned, being a second hand person, but again, uh, fire protection would yield a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Typically, you tell me how your department works, when you issued certificate of occupancy, that kind of releases the contractor and now that building's ours again.
Correct.
Yeah, so, then it's ours to do what we want to do as far as letting museum people in or whoever, right?
I would say.
Okay, I'm just, just curious why he is, right, cuz it's.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
You don't get paid.
When I made, uh, down there with Steve, right, you don't get paid, uh, that's why the, the contractors typically want the C O at the end because, uh, whoever holding on to that last check, you have to show them a copy of this certificate of occupancy cuz that lets them, that lets the, whoever the owner is of the building know that, hey, uh, everything's complete, here's the C O, give him a check. But I haven't heard from.
That inspection. That inspection worked a hundred grand to him, right?
Okay, so Selectwoman Isaac.
Mayor, okay, so since Mr. Green said it's okay, so um are we giving you the okay to sign the paperwork now? Remember, we tabled it, you couldn't sign the paperwork, just asking a question. We said you were gonna talk that to Mr. Henry.
Well, a- again, this is an informal meeting and board cannot vote to authorize me. However, if you all tell me that you will ratify, go ahead and sign it and you will ratify it at the next meeting. I can do that with the understanding that this board is telling me, you know, that they would ratify. Uh Selectman.
Um Henry, um can you explain to the board what a certificate of occupancy is? Well, actually, let me give it a go and then you tell me if I'm right or wrong. I- is it true that a certificate of occupancy says from a city point of view, this building is safe for the public to be in?
Correct.
And so if it does not have a CO, then you're saying that it has not been ratified by you, that it is safe for the public to be in?
Uh we could say that, yes. I did my inspection, uh walked through with Steve and I didn't find anything. The only reason it hadn't been issued is because he hadn't contacted my office for it. So I won't say that the building is unsafe. I mean, in the past, it has been a practice for, say, um any other fast food restaurants, right? You know, we had several of them go over, go up over the last several years. They'll come in and request a temporary CO and at that time, they're probably ninety-five percent think complete with the building, with the exception of maybe furniture, to allow them to enter the building so that they can start training. In most cases, that's what it is, so uh why I hadn't heard from them, I'm not sure, but from my, uh from my office standpoint, the building is safe.
Let me ask this, yes, I agree with that. Let me ask this a hair differently. Do you believe that there is a percent of liability on the city if we allow the public to enter a building without a CO?
Uh I think that's kind of a loaded question, but it just depends on where the building is uh in its phase of completion.
So would be your recommendation that we allow occupancy of this building without him recommend, without him having a CO?
I would say yes in this particular case, because I've gone through it and looked at it and CO is ready to be issued. He just hadn't contacted ours, he mustn't want to be paid, uh that's why.
Now, Selectman Mullin.
If the people from Archives and History come in and inspect it and say, this is not what we agreed to, does that affect anything?
It does, but that's why the city attorney was saying contentious.
Because once you, once you, once you allow someone in the building, your contractor is, is off the hook.
For a year.
He off the hook. And so you can't then point to him and say, hey, come back and fix this.
Selectman Condon, that's Selectman Thompson.
If I understand correctly, this bill is seventy-five thousand and the retainage is about twenty-five thousand?
About twenty-some thousand.
Okay, so, so if we pay the seventy-five, then whatever Archives and History finds, if it costs more than twenty-five thousand, screw it, I'll just, I'll just give up the retainage. I don't want to come back down there for, for pennies. You know, so in my mind, you want to keep as much as you can in your pocket to make it worth the contractor to one hundred percent finish the job and not ninety-eight percent finish the job. And in my mind, on a one point five or whatever this project cost was, twenty-five thousand dollars, that ain't a lot of money to, to uh want to drive back from Gulfport up here to uh, to deal with some Department of Archives and History, which is some of the most testy people. You know, because, because you're talking about base materials, you're talking about flooring or siding that, that it's not like finishing. It's not the paint color we're talking about here. We're, we're talking about base materials in the project.
If I may add, Mayor, uh Selectman Condon to your point, if you say that uh we should hold on to as much as we can, I haven't issued a CO, but when you think it would be best that the Department of Archives and History at least take a look? And we still haven't paid the seventy-five thousand, because if I issue the CO, we just kind of discussed, that's the end of it. You know, so I've looked at it, the, the CO is ready to be issued, right?
So that could come to you tomorrow and the CO could be issued.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So if you're saying we want to hold on to the money, then we may not want to issue that CO.
See, I think this is y'all three more, yes, that would be my, this is a y'all three call, because
She just said.
In his, in, in, in my opinion of his role, his is the safety of the building, not if old hundred-year-old wood was used on the floor or if, you know, new wood was used on the floor. I, I, well, I think he could determine that. I think that's not his scope. A CO is safety. Is it safe for the public to enter it? Does it follow Department of Archives standards that we paid a lot of money for um to maintain this seal from Department of Archives and History? Is, is more of a Department of Archives history and I would, I would not want to put the city at liability of him making Department of Archives determinations. Even if he offers a CO, we're the owner in that situation. We're the one who makes the final payment. Um that's just my way of thinking about it.
Okay, I, I said Selectman Thompson.
So, so first, first of all, you know, I'm, I'm sure we have a contractor that we pay to oversee the project to make sure we got the right materials.
Or, or, or architect.
And then. And then on top of that, even after they complete the job, I think we still have a warranty period, should be a year at least, on all workmanship. I would get involved. And with, with, with the bond, to be sure that whatever they put there lasts. So. All we can go against, that's the hardest thing in the world, dude, when you're holding.
He's fine.
I would imagine.
But that's uh, that's basically our leverage. So if we have anything that's, that's incomplete or questions or, or whatever, we should have a year warranty on whatever workmanship we got there.
Can I follow up on what, because there's some other stuff that's not being said and I want to follow up on what Selectman McKenzie was talking about. And I'm going to bring it out, um because Archives and History uh needs to move and they would like to be able to go in and put some of their preliminary stuff in what they call the.
Museum almost moved.
Yes. Well, they, they've got to move their material out of the, and they want somewhere to put it without having to rent a place for storage. And the old baggage room that's back in the back, they would like to move and put those items in the baggage room. And this is the essence of why uh the urgency is there. Am I right, Selectman?
Yeah, that's, that's obviously what I'm going to get to. I think all these concerns you have, first, you're still have the big stick to hold. You know, you got a payment performance line on the contractor. It's required by law and you've got his money.
So your recommendation is pay the seventy-five, we still have the retainage payment.
And you still got bond.
And once.
You asking me or him?
Well, I'm asking you, actually. And then he's got a, and once the CO is rendered, then the museum can move in. And your argument is if the museum moves in, then a lot of our stick goes away.
Which is why I said, in order for them to go ahead and move in, you guys could read on your minute that this approval is contingent upon approval of all modifications by Department of Archives and History.
Does he have to accept that? The contractor?
I don't know. Does anybody have to accept anything?
Any terms, yeah, for one. All right, we got a week to think about it.
Okay. Well, put it on the agenda, they voted up or down. Yeah, okay.
Oh, man, that's.
Selectwoman, excuse me.
Houston, I'm sorry, but can you follow up with both of them and tell them, you know, where the city is? Is, is that, you know, can you reach out to both agencies? Our count, and then can you reach out to the, can you reach out, just asking you.
Yeah, he can.
Okay, but, okay, so you, you go call and tell him what, you know.
Can you babysit the contractor, Mayor?
Okay, you go do all that, that's all we just said, can you do it?
Yes, yes.
Because I was gonna ask Mr. Henry, can he do, I'm asking you, can you do it, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let me pass these out.
Didn't they take them six months?
Yeah.
One of the more important ones.
These are the ones who want to be, want to fill the position of uh Bessie Merle, which is an appointed position. They have to live within the city limits of McComb. I'm giving you, I'm not making a recommendation, I'm giving you those who have requested consideration for that position. Then I'm gonna pass to you the second stack are those individuals who have requested to be considered for the elected position, which will only be until November of next year because they will have an election.
Do all of these live in Summit?
They all live outside of the city limits of McComb. But in the school district. Area.
That is the male equivalent of Nisha.
Okay. You have the opportunity to review those. I'm not gonna make a recommendation. Normally, uh if we would have had a CA, he would have made those recommendations to you, but because he's new, uh I was not gonna put that on him uh because the applications have come in and we've got to fill those positions. And the one that's selected got to be in place by January first. Selectman Condon.
All right, so who is going to confirm that these reside in that area?
Yeah. Um I looked at the addresses of those individuals.
And you matched it to the map and it, you feel like it stood the gun.
Yes.
Um when do we plan?
That is Selectman Condon.
When do you, when do we plan on putting this on the agenda?
Um. We got a board meeting coming up on the night. Uh then we have a board meeting coming up on the twenty-second, twenty-third. Uh. The timing is left up to you all.
Okay. Um are we gonna be, are we gonna do it? Option A, option B, option C, option D, and then stop whenever one's, who, who's gonna pick the order?
We're gonna do it alphabetically.
That way.
Let's say it is. I know it is, but that way it's fair.
First one to get four votes wins.
Yep, going straight down.
Been done that way before.
I know. But I did not, I, I did not feel that the mayor should be making a recommendation uh on this. I felt that the board needed to see everybody who put in. Okay. Um. Next, housing report, page fifty-four. That's just the corrected version. As you know, um we did sign the MOA, MOA. Uh it did not have an effective date on it. So we paid since the uh Attorney General's opinion was in August. We paid. Where is it? Okay. I found it. Um since we paid for only August, um which we should have paid, signed in November, it should have been, went through November, so we had to come back. We paid eight thousand of the seventeen thousand, so we still owe eight thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents to uh the county. I'm gonna ask the board to, to allow us to go ahead and uh write a check to the Pike County Board of Supervisors, or whoever we write the check to, and you ratify this amount uh Tuesday night. Okay, it's gonna be a ratification, so tomorrow, let's write a check for the remaining amount and we will ratify. And uh board. Okay. Uh telepathic, as you know, you gave Mr. Spurlock and myself uh permission to sign uh fiber optic. You will notice that this fiber optic is there on Sherman Drive, Highway fifty-one and MDOT Drive. And we have already signed it, but you see all the information related to that. You will have to ratify our signature uh Tuesday night of this document. Okay? I'll talk to you about this. Um with that being said, we're down to monthly business review and we're gonna start off this time with um McComb Main Street Association.
Welcome back to the floor.
Ms. Shawn Thompson.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, um so I wanted to firstly come before the board this evening, number one, to make a recap. As you know, or you may not know, December thirty-first will mark two and a half years that I would have been with the McComb Main Street Association and at that point, I will be transitioning out of the role and handing it over to my successor, Mr. Brandon Andrews. So having said that, I'll now let him introduce himself in just a moment. I did want to recap uh just some of the things that have happened uh during my tenure. So um we did complete basic renovations in two nineteen Main Street. I would love for you guys to stop by and take a look at it. It's great electrical, plumbing, flooring, painting. We have two unit set bathrooms in there that are fully operational and equipped. So again, when you're down on Main Street and have a moment, please take a look at all of the um progress that has been made in that building. The next step would be, of course, to start to procure the exhibits for the museum. The second portion would be the Iron Horse Festival, um carrying that on for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So in your package, you will see how much was spent in twenty twenty-four. And then, of course, we expanded the festival uh this year to include a concert as well as the carnival and that is the amount that we spent this year to produce that concert. We also launched six, I know it says five, but six new community engagement events, uh some are monthly, some are annual and uh those are listed as well. So if you have this, this is this year, that's what you're looking for, okay? And uh beautification, uh thank you for the um support and the contribution to um get the string lights completed on Main Street, the two hundred block. We also uh provides, uh will provide some supplies to the Railroad Depot and there are more Christmas decorations coming. If you look at the second page that was provided, you will see lights, um instruments. We uh did have enough funds to purchase six of these. So you will see, there will be six different instruments that are pre-lit, uh five to six feet in height. Um when we ordered them, we didn't understand that it was actually custom, why are you looking like that? So, you okay? Um we didn't understand that um it would take more than three months for them actually to come, uh because they, they are custom, they're uh being custom made. So we're expecting them to arrive sometime this month. Because they are instruments, um it might be nice for us to keep them up all year. Because they are instruments, um it might be nice for us to keep them up all year long, of course, it is up to the board when you decide. But we will strategically place them around the downtown district. And uh we are also ordering banners for the one hundred and two hundred block of Main Street. And you have a sample of those banners. We have selected forty-four uh notable um stars from Macomb. And we will be honoring them on banners down Main Street. We would love to continue that throughout the city of Macomb um if it is feasible. And of course, we saw more programming throughout this two and a half years with uh various organizations. So uh for example, the Arts Council, the Pike School of Arts, Peak Pike County Beautiful, the banks who um contributed artwork as well as um major contributions and support from our police department, our fire department, and public works, and the small businesses downtown. So having said that, do you have any questions before I turn it over to Mr. Andrews? Alright, so um the last month, our board, the Main Street Board, um we uh kinda put some feelers out there to see if we could get recommendations of who would be a great candidate to fill this role. We did, um, we we received a couple of uh resumes and applicants and we felt that Brandon Andrews was the best person to fill this role based on his contributions to the community already. He sits on several boards, he is a local Realtor, and I will let you uh let him talk a little bit more about himself.
Before I talk about me, I wanna thank uh Shawn for everything that she's done for Macomb and the Main Street Association. Uh, it's been fun and inspiring to watch you do what you've done for the city and for Main Street. And I know y'all appreciate her uh as well as all cities, so thank you, Shawn. Uh, I'm excited to get to work. I think that the organization has a lot of opportunities to continue the great work that Shawn uh and the board have uh started. And I think there's an opportunity for uh the Main Street Association to really become an ambassador for some goodwill. Um, and just inspire some investment and positivity uh around the city as a whole. And I think we can do some good stuff. Uh, that's what I wanna focus on. Y'all are problem solvers, I wanna leave those to y'all. And I will be busy with the good stuff, so uh, you know, always call on me and I am always open to suggestions um and critiques and anything that I can do uh to make us all better. Uh, um, I'm ready for it, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Um, Shawn and 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 Brandon don't go nowhere. First of all, I I hope I'm I'm gonna speak now, but I hope I'm speaking for the entire board. Uh, if not, they can speak for themselves. But I feel that that board appreciate the effort uh that you made here in our Macomb Main Street Association. Everything that you did, uh exhibits you were able to bring to Macomb only help Macomb with its image, the prosperity that have come to downtown Macomb. You have focused on it and we just appreciate you and what you have done. Not only for Macomb Main Street, but for the city of Macomb as a whole. Again, thank you for what you've done. And Brandon? I'm not gonna say you have some big shoes to fill, but Brandon, we're expecting that you will build up on what she has set up and continue to 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 inspire others, to get involved and and look at the positive things that's happening in our downtown. And Ms. Becky? We expect you to keep pushing. Okay. Now, if board members would like to say something, you may.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you all.
Department. Don't let me have to call.
Hello, hello, hello. October, uh we issued temporary permits. Uh, we had zero stop work orders, uh fifty-seven fire inspections, thirty-one uh rental property inspections, most of those are permits. Uh, open citations, we have thirteen, closed, we closed six citations. Uh, as far as go go, we had ninety-two and four new ones. Uh, uh, we're getting closing, uh, 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 split twenty-five percent of the budget. Uh month of November, we had uh two thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars in permits. And uh year to date for the fiscal year, we are at just over thirty-nine thousand.
Okay, feel good story?
Um, I don't have a few.
That's okay, sometimes it's like that.
Barriers?
Uh, currently, I don't think I have any barriers.
It's like that sometimes too.
Okay, Selectman Mullins?
What was the percentage of the bucket that you?
So uh, like last year, mayor, uh you know that when we done the uh demo project and I certainly, uh I guess I'll take the blame for it. Uh, because we did, like I said, till end of fiscal year, we used that money and went back into the previous fiscal year. So we kept in the same spot. Uh, so when the invoice was turned in, uh it was paid from this year's budget. So yeah, I I guess I'll take the blame for it, but that's what happened and that's why it's going back.
Hopefully, Mr. Green, uh, the auditors will come in and bag that out. They use the word accrue it out of this year since it was their last year. And and normal our process is if you get it in by the end of October, those invoices that were for the prior year will be accrued back to that year.
Uh, Selectman Card, what was October's revenue?
Uh, October was twenty-two thousand, uh that was uh planning fitness. That that was the biggest company in there.
Magnolia Crossing, is that permanent for us yet?
Uh, Magnolia Crossing, no. Uh, actually, today, they got it. Uh, you're talking about Jax, they got it today.
I was trying not to say all that.
Well, they, you know, I I usually keep questions until they pull a permit, so, but yeah.
We're not a workforce business.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Little girl every, I'm not sure about Golden Sheep. You know, that was supposed to come next to Wendy's, but they closed the one at Haddonburg, so I don't know.
They closed it to come here. I'm just playing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. Next?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, this is a report for the month of December. Uh, we have one resignation and five new hires. Uh, we currently still have at least four vacancies within our police department, four in public works, seven firemen, uh none in zoning, one in recreation, and none in admin. Uh, I don't have any barriers, so let me find them. Uh, but my feel good story is that we found out a city administrator. To help carry this load.
Good evening.
Good evening.
From the month of November, public works, work order is outstanding. Street had twenty-seven, utility had sixty-three, traffic had three, cemetery had fifteen. Work order is open, street had seventy-five, utility had a hundred and twenty-eight, traffic had thirteen, cemetery had fifteen. Work order is closed, street had a hundred and eight, utility had sixty-three, traffic had nineteen. We uh put up all the Christmas lights and we put the Christmas tree up. We had a hundred and ninety-two cutoffs and we had a hundred and one uh eight-one-one calls. And then that twenty-five sitting on my budget.
Selectman Tom?
I've got like several calls, man. I I'm sure this was one of the work orders that was open and closed, I I would assume. This uh Big Pot Hore, two oh four North Magnolia Street?
I just called about that twice.
What do you mean?
The same person that called you, he called me and I called again, yeah. But that wasn't asphalt, right?
Hasn't that been addressed?
We will, we we're getting that phone tomorrow. And we'll get it addressed tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, cause I, yeah.
Selectman Mullins?
Uh, what is the reason for the high utilization that you're budgeting? Twenty-five percent?
Um, you could say, um, brand water leaks and um I've been hiring new employees, so I have to get them taken care of.
But at twenty-five percent, you get nine months to do?
Be nice if we had a copy of that.
Selectman Tom?
Uh, let me ask you, uh, when you guys do your cuts in the in in the street, y'all make the Y cuts, Z cuts, whatever you call it?
Utility cuts.
When y'all make your utility cuts, do you go back in and cut out? Monitor that area or do they have to call in and report it to see you guys that go back out to monitor?
I don't go back and monitor, I have a guy that definitely still has to go back.
So he he responsible for double checking after you guys cut it?
Right.
To, because I I understand that a lot of people having to call in, planning on a work order for you guys to go back out and fix it. I don't know, I'm just asking. Well, that's the way it works.
That's the way it works, we we go back and check it, but you also gotta remind him that a lot of rain, when you do it, those are your utility cuts when it's raining, you knock your own stuff, material out.
Right. I I agree, I agree. But but my question was, like, my question was, is your team responsible for keeping up with the areas that you cut?
Yes.
And not the, not the, the citizens don't have to call in to say, I want to put this on the work order for you guys to come out?
Well, we don't like the citizens to call.
They doing that.
Obviously, you know, we can't be everywhere. We do have, we, you do have the responsibility to go back and check, but we do have, we do like the citizens to call, cause they see it more than we see.
Yeah, cause I got one there, my fourth grade school, man, it's just been off the chain. I mean, when they built the gym and I mean, the the whole road is just, is is down to one lane. So we want to do something every point. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I just, they they they, I'm telling you, I will if y'all get the calls, but I assure you I do. So that's something that we won't, we won't forget.
Well, man, you calling either.
I know, man, but
If you're getting the calls, you feel free to call us and we'll attend to it.
Selectman Card?
So um, may maybe maybe I can clarify this a little bit. Um, I I I think the issue comes down to process. What I'm hearing, the question is, is or the concern I'm seeing and the question I'm hearing is is you have one team that comes out and fixes the water leak or whatever, and then it's another team that comes out and asphalt the road, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, I think there's a very large delay between the two. Fixing the water leak and and putting asphalt down, more than just settling time. And I think our argue, my concern is the work order to fix the water leak isn't being turned into a asphalt work order. There's a disconnect there. It's almost like there's two work orders and then I have to call for the water leak and then I have to call later and say, hey, I need, we need this asphalt cut repaired. And so I think there's a break in process that we just need to lean into a little bit, that's all.
Man, you're, I have to I have to terminate two of my experienced workers. I'm hiring people that need to be trained, okay? So I don't have that many experienced workers down there, okay? So they have to be trained, you just can't turn them out and just tell them to do asphalt. You're not gonna get no one that does asphalt to work for the city of Macomb.
So is that your biggest barrier?
One of them.
What's your feel good story? Coming to us with a plan to to help help you. My my only pushback would be that two years ago, it seems like the board approved an asphalt team. I think your best argument to that is they are getting paid peanuts. I couldn't, as soon as I hired one, another one left. Uh, but, you know, try to bring us a s- a solution to that, uh because my understanding is the will of the board two years ago was to have a full-time asphalt team. And two years later, we're still not there yet. And hopefully, we can find a solution for that in the next six, eight, seven months.
Okay. No, Ms. Joyce?
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Joyce.
Okay, November, Recreation Department, uh Otterius Park to contract rentals. MLK had seven rentals events, the gym, we had open gym for Thanksgiving break. Apple Center, we had four rentals. At the sports park, we've been busy. Ravens Football League hosted the championship game on the eighth. Right now, we're having the Christmas parade registration. Tomorrow is the last day, four thirty is fifty dollars. Uh, youth basketball registration is still going on for ages sixteen, seventeen, uh it's fifteen dollars. Uh, we have basketball coaches meeting, we have police training, uh upcoming events. This Saturday is the Christmas parade on the sixth, ten o'clock. The theme is Twisted Night Before Christmas. The basketball league starts January the eighth on Thursday evenings and Saturday mornings. My feel good story is y'all keep me busy with projects and um I've installed part of my first playground equipment at Shaverius Park. And my biggest barrier is um I don't have an office manager.
Really?
Well, you have the thing you might not get for it.
Okay, anything from the board? Anything from the board? Not needing a turn?
Amen, bless the Lord.